Up to you, Dr. Up to you, because I have everybody that our session will start at three. But it is a recorded version, but it is not a compulsory session, so only for those who are
Alright.
Interested to do the quali with Attenna.
Alright, alright. So I just proceed for today. Okay, before that, thank you, Dr. Nomi, for inviting me. Assalamualaikum and good afternoon, everyone. So I'm Dr. Li Hai. I will share, I will share today how to analyze data using qualitative. Okay, for. Okay, before that. No, me, that's you already change for who's?
Yes, yes, I change you as a host.
Alright, alright, okay.
But if there is any problem or you want to re-change again, you want to change again, Dr. Ihan?
Alright.
Because to allow you full control, actually. To give you full control. Kalau nanti kalau nak tukar balik, nanti, Dr. Ihan just change a host to my name again lah.
Alright, sure. Alright, okay, so I was my name Raheem, I will start my sharing for today class. Okay, Africa, okay, okay, I'm. I, okay, maybe for today, Dr. Nomi already shared that today I want upper, I want to explain the procedure in qualitative data analysis, okay? And I believe that, Dr. Nomi, already share with you in term of type of data in qualitative, I'm sorry, because they have a spelling error over there. Okay, for your information, in qualitative, we have a three technique to collect data, which is interview, for the second one is observation, and then one is document. So for your information, in qualitative, we only use this technique to collect our data. We not use survey or question A, okay? And maybe it's okay, we just recap first, okay? Okay, I believe that you already, I mean, Dr. Nomi already share with you what exactly in that interview, okay? And then for your information, for in that interview, we have a two type. For the first one is face-to-face, and then the second one is FGD, or we call it as a focus group discussion. Okay, okay, the next one is semi-strat, I mean, the interview model, okay? The interview model. Okay, for your information, in qualitative, we have a three, we have a three type of interview model. For the first one is structure interview, and the second one is semi-structure, and the third one is non-semi-structure. So for your information, normally or mostly, we use a semi-structure to collect our data. And then we call semi-structure in qualitative as an interview guide, okay? Interview guide, okay? What actually interview guide, for your information, interview guide is a guide for you before, I mean, during you collect your data, okay? This is more to listing your question that you want to ask to your informant, okay? Why I mentioned informant, okay, for your information? In term to differentiate between qualitative and quantitative is what we call it, in quantitative, we name our participant in our research is respondent. But in qualitative, what I get from my supervisor and so on, they advise me to use informant. Why? Because we want to differentiate between a quantitative and qualitative. So maybe in your writing, in your final year project or research proposal, if let's say you want to use a qualitative as your, I mean, as your approach to collect your data, maybe, maybe I suggest you to use informant, okay? Informant to refer to your, what we call it, your participant in your research, okay? Okay, yeah, what actually in-depth interview, this is a more to probing process. I believe that this one, Dr. Nomi already shared, it's okay, I will recap, okay?
Yeah, Dr. Ihan, Dr. Ihan can go in detail, because I'm not really touch on qualitative, actually during the sebab hilang dua minggu, you know, hilang dua minggu during the flood rush.
Yeah, I know, I know, because I'm also have a problem right now, because tomorrow I have to finish my, my, my slivers. But it's okay.
Dr. Ihan can go in detail as possible.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nomi. So what actually in that interview, as I mentioned before, in that interview, refer to probing process. What actually probing process? Okay, probing process is you refer to, you want to get no detail. Okay, for example, you ask one ma chi, you ask one auntie, ma chi, may I know in daily, in daily breakfast, may I know what menu that you take, okay? Nasi lemak and the ma chi, I will reply, oh, I eat nasi lemak every day, okay? Then want to know the ingredient, I mean, it's not, is it, they have an extra lau, for example, extra dish? Then you ask, ma chi, may I know, is it nasi lemak only, or you add on sambal, petai, or rendang, daggis, for example? Yes, I add on sambal petai. So this is more to probing process, which is in interview, you want to get, I mean, you want to get more information. You just not really on nasi lemak, but you, but you want to know what it's not nasi lemak, but you want to know, is it nasi lemak only, or they have an extra dish? Okay, so this is more what actually probing process? And yes, for your information, in that interview, we have a three type model for interview, I mean, for the first one, a structure, same structure and nice structure, I already discussed. I mean, already mentioned before, okay, what actually such interview, okay, for your information, such interview more to, they have a close-ended question. Maybe, I'm not sure, you guys already have experience on this or not, based on my experience. I, I received one call, then that lady mentioned that she was from maybe Maldeka Research, something like that. Then she asked me to answer the question, something like that. So this is more to structure interview, okay? And then for semi-structure, yeah, we have to use interview guide, or in bahasa Melayu, we call it as, what we call it, panduan termovei, okay? So and for semi-structure, mostly, yeah, it's still interview model, but this one more to you just give one topic, then your participant will discuss about that. Okay, mostly, for example, you want to discuss about football in Malaysia, I mean, all right, football Malaysia. So you give one topic, and then the informant will discuss, will talk about football in Malaysia. So this is more to unstructured interview, which is no interview guide at all, okay? Okay, for the next one is, yeah, this is interview structure. What I just mentioned before, this is a theme, okay? And then how to do it, I mean, how to do your interview protocol or guide, okay? Actually, for interview protocol, we have a two type. For the first one is closed-ended question and also open-ended question, okay? Mostly, in qualitative, mostly we use open-ended question, okay? Because why? Because respondent can give any answer. If let's say you ask, if let's say in interview guide, you use a short, short question, and then for sure, you have, what we call it, you just, you will get a little information. That's why in interview, I mean, in interview session, or in qualitative, we use open-ended question, because our informant can give any answer, okay? Just not to yes or no, okay? Okay, okay, so this is flow, how to conduct the interview. So for sure, for the first one, you have to, I mean, you have to identify who will you want to interview, okay? And then for second one, how many informant will be interviewed? Okay, this one quite tricky, I will share later, because this one referred to saturated point, or this one referred to sample size, okay? For your information, in qualitative, quite different between quantitative and qualitative, because in qualitative, the sample size, what we call it, in qualitative, a sample size quite small compared to quantitative. Why? Because this is in qualitative, we have to decide whether we want to collect that data again or not, based on the saturated data, it's okay, I will share later, what exactly mean of separated data, okay? That's why, that's why in qualitative, maybe, me, maybe we have only three, three or four interview compared to quantitative, we have to collect data around 400, 300, for example. So in qualitative, our sample size very small, okay? It's okay, I will share later, why qualitative is more to a small sample size? Okay, how many interview session will be conducted? So this is, it's okay, I will share later this one, okay? How long should you allow for upper for your interview, for this one, for your information? Mostly for beginner, I will suggest that, I mean, it's not for beginner. I will suggest that for each interview session, just nice if let's say you, you interview your, you interview your informant between 20 until 45 minutes. Why? Because you will, you will, because after you interview session, you need to transcribe your data. It's okay, I will share later, but this one just want to get us some idea, actually, what actually qualitative data? I mean, qualitative research, okay? And then the last step is where do you conduct the interview? So this one also one of important thing, make sure the surrounding is less of noise. Why? If let's say you conduct your interview, and then they have a new, I mean, and then your, what we call it, your voice recorder will capture the noisy, okay? So please be careful in term where, I mean, the location want to conduct your interview. But right now, I believe that we can collect our data using Zoom meeting, so should not be problem, okay? Okay, yeah, this is some tips for you conducting the interview, how much informant that you will give? I mean, before, okay, this one refer to, before you conduct your interview session, you have to breathe, you have to explain to your informant that the purpose of the interview session, because some of your informant will, some of them for sure will feel not unsafe. I mean, they feel that unsecure in term of the safety of the information given, okay? So that's why you have to share with your informant, okay? This, you have to mention that, okay, this interview session purposely for for our research, for my research, for example. So you have to clear first, okay, because why? I have a my friend, which is, she want to collect his, her data, and then suddenly her informant not allow, I mean, not allow my friend to record during this interview session. So that's why, before you collect your data, you have to brief us your informant, okay? And then, yeah, establish a report, what actually is a report? Report this one more too, you have to try to connect, connect first with your informant, okay? If let's say, if let's say your informant is an introvert, for sure you have a problem in them during, I mean, during your interview session. If let's say your informant is a extrovert, for example, like me, maybe no problem. If let's say you ask me, then I will answer, okay? No problem. If let's say your informant have a trust issue, or they have a high wall, maybe it's not easy to, to get information from your informant. So maybe you have tried to, tried to, what we call it, just text first, okay? Hi, hi Tuhan, hi Tuhan, can I get on you? Because next, honestly, I want to collect my data, just say hi, that one just, just, just fine, okay? And then, yes, you have to prepare in advance, do your homework, for example. I believe that in HRD, we have, for sure you want to. Have a phone call wait for my, I need to, I do not know, okay, over here. Class, class. Alright. Okay, so, yes, you have to prepare in advance. So I believe that in HRD, we have for sure is involving with organization and so on. So before you conduct the interview, make sure you study first, who is your informant, okay? Try to do some extra work, paper, homework. Then, yes, prepare an interview guide, okay, as I mentioned before, interview guide is a set, okay? They want, I refer to one set of question to guide you during you conduct your interview session, okay? Okay, so this is some tips. Okay, yes, tips for conducting the interview session. For the first one, you have to active listening, because if let's say you do, I mean, if let's say you focus on jot down your, your, your notes, okay? And then maybe it will affect you to focus on listening, okay? And then, yes, for the second one, you have to patient, because some informant for let's say, if let's say, yeah, they are more to extrovert, they like to talk, 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 suddenly, and you feel that, okay, this is, this informant still not answer my question, so how? So you have to patient, and then, yes, you have to flexibility, which is researcher. Sometimes, your, 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 what we call it, your informant will answer the last question. You ask your informant first question first, for example, ma chi, may I know what you eat every day, okay? But that ma chi will answer you, why she not cook every day? So you have to be flex, flexible, okay? In term of, if let's say you ask your informant first question, but suddenly your informant answer the last question, it's okay? You just try to flexible, just think, I mean, you can think based on your interview protocol. Then after that, if let's say your informant still not answer, for example, question number two, you can try to ask your informant again, okay? So the next one is, so this is, yes, be a good observer. And then, yeah, why I, why over here mention that be a good observer? Because during you ask them question, some of them will react in term of to respond to your answer. Maybe that one is a sensitive part, and you have to alert with that. Maybe, for example, you ask, okay, doctor, why, may I know why you want to become a salator? Then maybe that one is a sensitive part for me, and I will change my, for sure, I will change my reaction, my, my body language, and also in term of my donation. So as a researcher, you have to be aware in term of the change of body of language and also the donation, okay? Okay, the next one, so this is a type of question, you have to know the background and demographic question, for example. Okay, ma chi, can you share with me, okay, about your, about yourself, for example? So this is a type of question, okay? So you can use descriptive textual questions, like your question, also contrast. So this is type of question that you can use in your interview protocol, okay? So this, so this is a special tip for good question in conducting interview. For example, you want to ask feeling question, how do you feel about that, something like that, okay? So this is some tips, it's okay, do not worry, I will share your slide, okay? I will share this for you, maybe you can use. Okay, the next one is probing technique, what actually probing technique? As I mentioned before, yes, probing technique. We want to generate further explanation, why I ask nasi lemak? Because we want to know, is it they have an add-on dish or not? Yeah, so that's why in qualitative, in interview session, we need probing technique, okay? Okay, okay, form of probing, please avoid three type of question, for example, multiple question, long question, yes, and no question, okay? Okay, recording interview data, okay, for your information, because yesterday, because I have a sharing session for master and PhD student yesterday. So one of your sister asked me, okay, doctor, is it, if let's say we want to conduct interview session, do I need to record our interview session? Yes, why yes? Because if let's say you do interview session, and then you just want to jot down your, your notes, for example, believe me, what, what, what informant share with you? For sure, we'll, for sure you are not capture all the information. That's why in interview session, you need to record the interview session, okay? You need to record interview session, okay? Let's say you don't have audio recording, it's okay, you can use your, okay, you can use your phone to record, because I believe that nowadays in smartphone, we have a voice recorder, so no problem, okay? And then we also, right now, I believe that impact of coffee, and then we mostly use Zoom meeting. So, yeah, you can record the interview session using Zoom meeting, okay? And then not taking, yeah, it's a good for you, if let's say during the interview session, you want to take note. But if you ask me, yeah, it depend on you, because I don't want, if let's say you ask me, for sure, I will say that I will not, not taking, because why? I want to focus during, I want to focus during the interview session, because if let's say I to focus to jot down my notes, for sure I will not focus during the interview session, okay? So it's up to you, if let's say you want to combine between audio recording or not taking. So this one, based on which one that you prefer, okay? Okay, so the next one is a listening skill, yeah, in listening skill, we have a effective listening. So this is how actually listening skills we develop, maybe for the first interview session, you will feel that la, napo, interview machine, it's okay, because in, I mean, in, in, that if listening skill will develop maybe from first interview session, from to second interview session, do not worry, in listening skill will develop, okay? Okay, so attend to ethical consideration, it's okay, I will share this one later, okay? Okay, what the conclusion is, good qualitative question can be significant tools that shape a study, design, and MCs, okay? As you can see here, why I mention over here significant tools? Because I believe that some of students still confused between qualitative and quantitative in term of instrument, okay? Don't be confused, because I believe that if let's say, Dr. Nomi, or others lecture mentioned that, I've mentioned about instrument, instrument, okay? I believe that among of you already know that instrument referred to question A or survey, okay? But in qualitative, you have to know that in qualitative, researcher are the main instrument. Okay, so this is a difference between quantitative and qualitative. So this one you have to get understand between, I mean, a difference between qualitative and quantitative, okay? If let's say in quantitative, yes, instrument, refer to your, refer to your survey or your question A, but instrument in qualitative referred to researcher, who is a researcher? You guys, me, okay? So, yeah, that's why, if let's say you want to write down in your research proposal or in your writing, if let's say you want to discuss about your interview protocol, for example, you just mentioned that your interview protocol is a tools, not your instrument. Okay, I hope that this is a clear between what actually instrument in qualitative, okay? Okay, for part two, okay, observation, you have to know that observation also one of the strategy or one of the technique in collecting data in qualitative, okay? What is, okay, so the next one is observation in our research, yes? We observe every day often unconsciously, so this one, our routine observation is not considered as a research. Okay, excuse me. So in your research, in qualitative observation as a data collection method, okay? But mostly, this one refer to, because why? Refer to systematic, step-by-step procedure, okay? And address a specific research question subject, okay? So, so this is what actually research in observation in research. Okay, why we need use observation in our research? For the first one, we want to understand the contact, okay? We want to triangulate, what is triangulate? In qualitative, we cannot depend only on one technique, for example, interview session. But it's a good, if let's say you do interview session, then you want to do what we call it, you want to pair, you want to use our observation to strand your data, okay? So you want to strand your data, it's okay, you can use our interview session and also observation, okay? And then, why we use observation in research? We can record behavior, okay, we can record behavior, what actually happening? And then also we can see the specific behavior actual, okay? Maybe people can give, not write the information during interview session. Then we want to confirm that, we want to say, we want to see, is it, is it correct what he or she mentioned just now? Then when you go to interview, you can get a clear picture what happening in the surrounding, for example, okay? Okay, they have a difference between observation and interview session. Okay, for the first one, observation take place in the nature setting. Observation are firsthand, and then also in a real time. Yeah, interview can be interwoven with observation. So if let's say you want to collect data interview, then you want to strand your data with observation. Yeah, they want, we call it as a data translation, okay? Okay, so this is how you want to prepare your observation, yes, you have to train and mental preparation are important. Because why? Because you need to write descriptive and reflective note, it's okay, I will share later, what actually descriptive and reflective note. And then you have to practicing the discipline recording of the field note, so this one more too, you need to. And then you have to practicing the discipline recording of the field note, so this one more to, you need to. What you saw, you need to write that one, okay, so it is one more to, you need to training, I mean, in term of recording of field note. Okay, and then, yeah, you have to know how to separate the detail, is it a descriptive note or roughly. Uh what we call it, reflect uh notes, okay. Okay, the next one is what to observe, okay, if let's say you want to, uh if let's say you want to. Conduct research in um in organization, one organization, and then you want to. Uh and then you want to see the behavior of the workers, for example, yeah, you already interview um the management. Um the management level and also the staff level, at the same time, want to um strand your data from the interview session. What you do is you can do, uh you can um do observation. Maybe you can stay at that one organization, maybe for six day or five days, up to you, one week, second week, okay. So what to observe, for the first one, you can uh physical setting, okay, for physical setting mostly, you have to draw the. What we call it, you have to draw the setting of the office, okay, demo to plan uh plan lantai. Plan lantai, something like that, uh yeah, so you know, you have to play a a draw where exactly um what we call it. Uh door, uh receptionist, table, uh boss in your office, everything, so you have to uh draw it. Physical setting, after that you have to observe in term of daily activity, but this one based on your research question, okay. And then you have to look at how um formal interaction, how you how human or social. Um environment, okay, and then you have to observe that informant, informal interaction, okay. Or unfulfilled activity, so what is exactly you observe in organization, okay, you have to write down. In the um what we call it. Uh what we call it, uh discrete if not, okay. Okay, what exactly, okay, um in observation, we have a two type of observation, for the first one is participant observation. And the second one is non-participant observation, so what actually participant observation, this one refer to that. Um the workers or the organization aware that you are researcher, okay. And for non-participant observation that the organization do not uh do not wear that you are a researcher. So this is a type of uh observation. Okay, so this one maybe I believe that you can read this one, okay, okay, when to stop uh observation. Okay, actually, I want to share with you about situation later, but it's okay, uh for your information. If let's say you collect data using um interview session or and also observation. It the same until uh if let's say your data already uh reached um situation. After that, you just after that, you um can stop to collect your data, but it's okay, I will share later, what exactly. Set the right point, okay, I will share later, do not worry, okay. So the next one is the strength and weakness during observation, uh yes, for strength allowed. For insight into contact relationship and behavior can reveal information previously unknown to researcher. That is a crucial for project design, so that's why they have a a good. Uh if let's say you want to conduct your interview and then after that you want to do uh observation, you will get, uh you will get uh wish data. Okay, you will get uh wish data, and then for the weakness, for sure, it will take a long time for you. Okay, it will, it will take a long time for you, because you need to stay at. Uh for example, you want, you need to stay in one organization to collect data, because you want, you have to observe. What the daily activity in that organization, for example, yeah. Okay, so this is a special tips, preparing and conducting observation, for the first one, yes, you have to select. Um site or location uh where to observe, and yes, before that, you have to gain the access first. Before you uh collect your data, and then you have to identify who or what to observe, okay. And then after that, you have to distinguish type of observation, okay, you have to design and use observational protocol. Okay, for this one, if let's say, if let's say you have a particular, um I mean, maybe in your research question. You have particularly in term of the organization and you want to observation, uh make sure you have to prepare. One um it's like, oh, it's like, uh it's like, it's like. It's like uh interview guide, so you have to prepare one observation protocol, but this one depend on your. What your aim for your research, okay, so this isn't my compulsory, but this one based on uh what you want, uh based on your aim lah. Okay, so yes, you have to record, and then you have to record, including description and also interpret of the observation. Yes, after that, you also even observation, you also have to um do a summary report, and then. Uh okay, I will show you what actually uh descriptive and what we call it, uh reflective or not, okay. Okay, if let's say you use observation, one of your technique in collecting your data. Uh for your information, observation, if uh in interview session, we more um. Collect our data during, I mean, using uh interview session, and then we use a time script for observation. Uh after you do your observation, you you have to carry out, I mean, you have to produce one. I mean, you have to produce field note, okay, what actually field note, they have a two type, uh for the first one is uh descriptive note. Okay, and the second one is really uh reflective note, okay. Okay, what actually uh what actually if descriptive not mostly um descriptive not that. This one refer to research setting, what you saw, what everything in the research setting or location, you have to write down, okay. And reflect if not this one, refer to your idea, your opinion, okay, I will show you example. How to write descriptive and reflect if not. Okay, so this is the same, the same thing, okay, 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 so this is example, uh. Uh discrete if not and uh reflective not, so you have to remember that, if not more to what. Uh more to um research setting, more to physical, what you saw, uh how um human interaction. For example, okay, and reflect if not refer to um your opinion, you want to interpret something. So everything, if you want based on your idea, based on your opinion, everything, you have to write down on reflective note. If let's say you want to describe the research setting or uh what you saw, I mean, how the human interact. And so on, so you have to write down in descriptive note, okay, as you can see on reflective note, they have like. Um what we call it, this is more to um layout, okay, layout of the event. So if let's say you have to observe in one organization, so you have to draw like this, okay, you have to draw like this. But this one depend on you, you want to do or not, okay. So, uh so this is example, uh what, maybe you can use this one, if let's say you want to observe. How uh this one um involving with uh human, maybe you can um describe or you can. Maybe you can based on, but actually uh this one based on your research in, okay. So not all you have to write down, but you have to remember that even, uh I mean, uh you have to remember that. What um discrete if not and reflective not are based on your research question or based on your aim, okay. Okay, so memo uh for your information, um this one not compulsory, but if you ask me. I not um I'm not, I I did not do a memo, because I have a one book to. Uh to write down everything regarding my research, so this one just it's up to you, you want to do a memo or what. But I you want, I just share with you how actually um memo, so this one more to, yeah, you can use a field note of. So this one more to, uh you can write down, okay, you can write down in your memo, but it's okay, this one uh depend on you, which one that you prefer. Okay, so many more about information or informant or participant, okay. So example, this one is up to you, you want to use a memo or any notes, okay. Okay, for the next one is a document and this is for your information, document and this is also one of the technique. To to, I mean, uh one of the technique uh to collect data in qualitative, okay, I already share with you, interview. Observation and the third one is a document and this is, okay, document um are usually not produced for. I mean, not produce for research, because normally document, uh they have other purpose, for example, they want to show the report. For example, then uh document are more stable source of data, so this is a generally do not. Effect on the research setting also informant, okay. And then for your information, um audio visual also include under document analysis, because uh. Previously, my, one of my student asked me, doctor, if let's say I want to use a picture, is it um. One of a different technique, no, actually, uh if let's say you want to use a picture in your research. They want under document analysis, okay, so as you can see here, we have a two type, okay, we have two type of our document. Which is a document and audio visual material, okay, what actually document, um research journal also include as a document. And also, and also uh is mine a personal document, okay, this one maybe, if let's say you choose some, what we call it. A narrative approach in qualitative, so you may maybe you you want use email or letter and so on. To support your your research, yes, you can use public document and so on, so this is a sample of. Uh for document and for audio visual, this one more to photography. Uh I mean, a video, we um film or picture uh website, I mean. For example, Facebook, Twitter, ID, yeah, that one under audio visual material, okay, so it's still under document analysis. Okay. Uh. Okay, uh for your information, yeah, uh document are written for others' purpose. For example, Nobel newspaper diary love song, okay, and based on available material, material that are available and accessible. You can get easy, and then uh usually serve as a secondary data, if you ask me. Uh I I use some that document and this is as my support to my data, so I you. In my uh research, I use a tree technique, which is interview, um observation and also document analysis, okay. And for your information, for example, in um anthropology study, they use document. As the main source of a data, okay, so this one, uh that's why in qualitative research, you have to choose. Uh you have to choose which one that you want to use uh in your data collection, it's not necessary that you will. Uh use three uh strategy, but it depend on your research question or your depend on your. In, okay. And then using document in qualitative data, yes, uh generally the same as the interview and observation. In term of challenging, finding relevant material and need to determine uh the authentic city and. Accurate of document, so it mostly this one are refer to historical feel, I mean, more to. Quality, okay, but I believe that this is not um related to your field, HRD field, okay. Okay, this one already share, okay, the strength and weakness document analysis. Um yeah, for the strength, uh for sure, are easy to accessible, free, and then. Maybe the only meaningful historical study, as I mentioned before, and then also technical and policy study. And then, uh yeah, um if let's say you use a document, for sure, the the data is static, okay. And and then for the weakness. Um yeah, document not produced for research, so maybe incomplete from research perspective. Maybe we can use some information from document to in our, I mean, in our research, okay. So this is a strength and weakness. Okay, I think I can proceed, okay, okay, uh yeah, actually, I believe that today, why Dr. Noemi invite me. Because uh Dr. Noemi want to want me to share, I mean, in term of qualitative data analysis. So I will share um how exactly uh to to analyze uh data um qualitative, okay. Okay, so far you have any question before I start, anyone you want to ask me before I start to Q D A. Okay. All right, I mean, thank you, okay, so I proceed. Okay, I proceed, okay. Okay, what is qualitative data analysis, okay, uh for your information, if let's say you choose qualitative. As your approach, um yeah, you have to working with data, you have to organize, you have to breaking, you have to. Sanitize and also you have to searching for pattern, so in qualitative data, you will have. Um you need to familiar with a code cat coding category and things, okay. Uh qualitative quite different with a quantitative, where quantitative, you just uh what we call it, you just uh distribute. Your uh your survey, then after that, after um the respondent answer your survey, are you go back. Then you just key in your data in S P S, after that, in one second, you can get your data, okay. But different in qualitative, you have to understand that qualitative, you have working with data, that's why. In qualitative data, I mean, in qualitative researcher as your main instrument. Why, because you need to uh starting from, uh starting from uh develop interview protocol. For example, so you already use your, I mean, you you as a research, uh you as a researcher, you already start as a. Uh instrument, I mean, instrument in qualitative, because you already developed your interview protocol, after that. You by your own, you collect your data. Siapakah itu? Shafika, do you have any question? Huh. Okay, so I continue back, so um what different is how. Okay, uh I'm not sure where I stop. I believe that in quantitative, is it, okay, after called quantitative, if let's say you already submit. I mean, already um key in your data, after that, you key in your data in S P S, just one minute, you get your, your, you get your. Your 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 data, your your finding, okay, but in qualitative, you have to. Uh develop your interview protocol, after that, you have to collect your own data, and then after you collect your data. Uh you need to timescribe, okay, what is timescribe, it's okay, I will share later, what is timescribe, you have. You have to do time scrap, after you do cut transcript, you have to your own um analysis. Which is we call as a codec, coding category and team. It's okay, I will show later what actually codec. And then, ah yeah, ah qualitative ah. Ah data analysis referred to process of systematic searching and arranging data to answer the research question. Okay, this one I just want to clear, even you are degree student, it's okay. I want to make you understand that in qualitative, we only use a research question. But it depend to your supervisor, okay, but the one ah this one the ah the ah depend on your supervisor. That's why I will always um um suggest my student that. If let's say you, if let's say you appoint, I mean, if let's say you want to use a qualitative as your. Ah research, okay? You have to strength, ah you have to, ah you have to make sure you have a strength or what we call it, you have um. Ah your research question already solid, because why? You need to use your research question. During your data analysis, okay? Why? It's okay, I will show you later, okay? The next one is, okay. Um yeah, actually, for your information, this is the way how qualitative process. Ah I believe that some of you already feel that. Um qualitative is um more difficult compared to quantitative, okay? I'm not, um because if, if let's say you ask me, before this, I'm also, to be honest, that I'm not. Um, I'm not, what we call it, I feel that qualitative is quite a difficult, I'm not. Ah, what can I say? Okay, I hate qualitative, okay, I hate qualitative and I try, I try my best. Ah not um use qualitative in my research, but suddenly, oh, my happiness, a little bit. Now, and then during my PhD, ah in fifth semester, I have to change my research method. From quantitative to qualitative, then that time, I feel that. Um, yeah, at the, at the first time, for sure, I feel that quite difficult. To, I mean, to, 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 to carry out qualitative. But after that, when I go through, I feel that quite interesting qualitative. And then, yeah, and today, I will say that. I fall in love with qualitative, okay? Okay, um so this is how actually, um how actually qualitative process. Ah it's okay, I will show later, maybe ah with the next slide, maybe quite, maybe it easy. Ah maybe will help you to understand ah easily, okay? Okay, in ah data um qualitative data analysis, it involving with a tree. Ah you have to know that ah codec, coding, category and teams, okay? What actually codec, okay, codec ah refer to code, this one refer to coding, open coding. And car refer to category and T ah refer to team. So this is a codec, so if let's say you want to use um. And qualitative as your approach, you have to um use this one. During you want to, ah I mean, that analysis, okay? Okay, what actually coding, okay, coding, this one refer to process of combine the data. Okay, usually it's a piece of, of a text, okay, I will show you, you know already, I will show you what actually. Ah coding, okay, what actually coding, I'm sure you later, okay? And then, and coding data also refer to code, ah given meaningful name, okay? And then make sure coding are related to a code coding, okay? Um, okay, so this is a coding. And then the second one, after you coding, you have to group this coding to, to develop category, okay? What actually category? Ah category refer to after open coding and entire text make a list of what a code word. Okay, after that, you have to cluster together, I mean, you have to cluster the same similar code, okay? And to group them, ah to group them to, to develop category, okay? Why? Why we need to do a category? Because we want to reduce the long list of code to a smaller, okay? Okay, and then the third one is a theme, what actually theme, okay? Theme refer to a process of looking for category that cut across the code, okay? Um I will share you later, okay, what actually theme? Okay, um this is, I just want to share, theme should reflect the purpose of the research and be mutual exclusive. And then the theme also should be more conceptual than category and both should be conceptual, mostly um. It's okay, it's okay, I should, I show you later, I don't want to confusing you guys, okay? Okay. So this is a um step by step in qualitative data analysis. So you have to understand, if let's say you want to, ah if let's say you use a qualitative in your research proposal, for example. I believe that you have to propose, I mean, I believe that you have to um. Ah produce one research proposal, so maybe in right, in your right, in chapter three, in data analysis part. Maybe you can suggest this flow, how to analyze your qualitative data, okay? Okay, for your information, um qualitative data analysis, we have a six step. For the first one, you have to sorting and preparing your data. And then the second step is you have to read the entire data. And then after that, you have to codec, coding ah category and team, okay? Then after that, you have to interpret data, what is interpret data, it's okay, I will, ah I will share later. Okay, what the first step, what you have to do is you have to sorting and prepare the data. Ah so you have to prepare the raw data, what actually raw data, raw data is from refer to voice recording, for example. Maybe you can use your smartphone, ah I mean, except to you, you want to use a smartphone. Or you want to use a Zoom meeting, for example, so you have to um separate, I mean, you have to. Ah organize ah ah your, your data, your raw data, okay? Then you have to time scrub, okay, what actually time scrub? I will show you later, the example of time scrap. If let's say in your research, ah they have involving with a photo, for example, if any ah. Ah document that you have, you can put together, okay? So this is a for, for the first step, you have to sorting and prepare the data. And then, ah for example, after you collect your data, I mean, um yeah, you already conducted interview session. Ah you have to do transcribing, what actually transcribing, transcribing is I refer to listening to voice recording, okay? You can use any music player, okay? And then you have to converting ah what you um said into written document, okay? Include ah anything, if let's say your, your, if let's say doing your interview session. And then maybe ah his daughter or her daughter coming, mama, mama, mama. So you have to, you also ah need to include the intro session also, okay? And then, ah the process also requires full attention, time patient and during transcribing, that's why. Ah suggest you, I, I suggest you, if let's say you want to conduct one interview session, make sure around twenty. Until forty-five minutes, just nice, because why? I believe that as a novice researcher, you will quite trouble into ah to, I mean. To, to, to copy, I mean, to, to do converting from the interview session into written document, okay? And then, ah during transcribing also, this process can provide, um what we call it. You will understand more the content of the conversation, because ah based on my experience, also during the interview session. You are not focused, okay, you are not focused, because you nervous that time, okay, maybe that one your first time. And then during you ah do your transcribing, you will understand the contact of the interview session. Okay, so this is the tips. Okay, so this is an example, how a transcript ah looks alike. Okay, you can write your name, I mean, your name, you can write name, interview we, interview were. Ah dates and location, because this one are easy for you, if let's say you want to refer back, okay? Okay, ah the next one is alright, minutes a good practice, easy to check, okay? Ah I like, if you ask me, um I like to, if let's say during our transcribing. Ah to, to write down the minute also, because why? If let's say, you feel that not comfortable, I mean, ah when ah you feel that. You are not really confident with this statement, you can play back based on the minute that you write. Okay, maybe you can recheck back. Is it correct what they say? I mean, I believe that they have a missing ah word here, so this is ah the best practice, okay? And then, yeah, if let's say some word you um in audible, just write X X, it's mean that. Um you not, ah maybe some word that you ah not ah. Recognize in term of the, they have a noise, ah, okay? So the, the, the next one is organized data, so this was still under sorting, ah sorting, ah your data. If you ask me how I um organize my data, ah once I already transcribe my process, I mean. Ah test the process is complete, so I organize my folder. Okay, because that too easy for us to use, okay? So it's up to you, you want to name your, 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 your folder, ah like what if, ah if. If me, I like to mention informant one and then I give the full name and then what date, so it's easy for me to trace. What, ah what actually did, ah I collect my data, okay? And then in my folder, okay, ah in this folder, ah content of your recording. Transcript original, transcript open coding and info related to informant, so this one based on your creativity, which one that you. Um prefer, okay? Okay, the second step is you have to read the entire data, because why? Ah because to understanding the data, okay, reflect on the whole meaning. Sometime is ah invisible input during the calculation, because why? Because you are nervous during your call your data, that time you cannot really focus. Okay, so that's why, ah after you done your time script, you have to read the entire data. To understand the data, okay? And during this time, ah some, ah something you feel that, oh, you already get some idea, okay? You already get some idea, sometimes also you already get, um okay, this ah this, this point. In which our research question, for example, so this is, um that's why you need to read the entire data. If you ask me how many time to read the transcript? Ah sepulakali, ten time, you need to read the entire data. So this is my, my tips again. Okay, yes, ah you have to familiar with your data, because why? Ah because you collect data um using interview session, when ah interview session. Is involving with a word, because why you need to convert from um. What we call it, you need to convert from um interview to written document, so that's why. In qualitative data is not involving with any numbers, but it will deal with words, okay? So you need to familiar with data, it is for you during your um analysis codec, okay? So ah this is example what I did before. Ah if let's say, ah if let's say, um if let's say, your conversation is not related. Or in ah relevant to your, your study, it's okay, you just um. Ah it's up to you how you want to do your, this or, I mean, ah how you want to do, but this is, I just share what I did before. Okay, then that, ah the third step is a coding, so this is ah mostly student quite. Ah they feel that quite difficult to understand in qualitative. So the third step is a coding, what actually coding, as I mentioned before. Ah coding refer to process of organizing data into section and segment based on textbook coming. The meaning of the data, so um for your information, ah coding data also refer to most important part of. Data reduction, okay? So this process ah involve with a tree, for the first one, yes, you have to read the, the, the transcript. Because you want to see the pattern first, that's why I mentioned before, you need to read transcript at least ten times. But this one be ah refer to you guys, okay? And then you need to write sentence as a code, okay, how to write a sentence, okay, I will show you later, the example, okay? Example, how to do a coding, and then, yeah, you have to read all data and level, okay, I will show you. Okay, for example, ah this is um your time script. And then how to do a coding, maybe ah help of co-. Help of committee or committee value, so this is your code, maybe, okay lah. Maybe you not understand what is good, okay, to be maybe too easy, you understand, could like um. The keyword or the point, okay, maybe to understand you, ah could maybe can um. Maybe you can ah as a keyword or as a point, okay? So ah during you read the um task app, after that, maybe you find out, okay, this is a keyword, okay? So this is a keyword, close knit committee, so actually, close knit committee, maybe you feel that this one are more key word. Actually, this is a coding, so you need to read all the entire transcript, after that, you will um. Identify which, ah which is a coding, okay, or key point. Yeah, yeah, ah the next one is also example, ah how to decoding, okay? It's up to you how, how your style, maybe you like like this, or maybe you like um like this, okay? And then the third one, also, this is example how to do according, maybe I miss having ah someone to check. To when I get home, maybe this one refer to feeling, yeah, then you want to ah put this one as a feeling, yeah. So this is a one off example. Okay, um for your information, in coding process, we have a three coding process. Which is referred to open coding, issue coding and select coding, okay? Okay, first, ah next step is a coding, I mean, ah category. Okay, after listen, ah after you listing open coding, okay, basically after second informant. Make a list of all code, so you have to make a list of your code, after that, you have to group together similar code. To develop category, I think to develop category. The objective to do category, ah as I'm, I mentioned before, to reduce the long list of code, okay? And for your information, ah these stage are very important to define that data situation, okay? As a point, ah as um as the point where no new information in the data, okay? What actually data of situation, okay, ah data of situation refer to, refer to um. Refer to um refer to data redundant, okay? If I refer to the data redundant and situation is referred to. Ah when ah which, when researcher gather ah data to the point of dismissing return. When and no, ah when and nothing new is a beginning at, so. If let's say you already collect your first ah four months, second. If let's say you already collect your first uh informant, second informant, they mentioned that. Um every day they they eat uh nasi lemak, so you feel that is it uh already data redundant or not? If you still not, um if let's say you still uh feel that, oh, this was still not situated. You collect another um data, I mean, you create another data, you do um intervention. And then the third informant also mentioned about uh every day uh he or she. Uh eat nasi lemak, so you already get a data redundant because why? Informant one, informant two and informant three mentioned about nasi lemak. Okay, so this is example how to uh how to determine whether your data already situated or not, okay. Okay, so um the data or data category should be situated. Then research should not situated the study participant, so this one refer to. You cannot mention, if let's say you want to propose your research um proposal, you cannot mention that. In this study, it will involve then. Informant, for example, you cannot uh mention that, because in qualitative, you have to mention that. In this study will involve with a participant until uh until uh the data. Uh until the data um reach the point of data situation, so this is how you want to. Write down, I mean, how to write down uh in the of your sample size in qualitative, okay. So this is a example. Okay, so this is example how to report data of situation. Um for example, if let's say you already complete uh call your data, maybe this is how, I mean, this is how you can write. In your finding your project, okay, for example, in this study, the five informant have achieved data situation. Where no new information occurred, it is then the researcher decide to stop doing data collection. So this is how you want to write your your report in chapter three, after you collect your data. Okay, so this one are more to your sample size, okay. Okay, after that, once you already decide that. You already uh your data already situated, then you need to develop. Team, okay, so team is a last uh process in qualitative data analysis, so. What is a team, uh team is to refer to the process of looking for category that cut across code. Okay, category must have a definition that uh compress the code, okay. After categorized, you can identify team, so so that's why. Uh after you already um identified that your data already situated, you have to uh group. Your your category into team, okay, and then. Uh team should answer the research question of the study, that's why, as I mentioned before, if they say you want to do. Qualitative uh in your finding your project or your research project. When you project, when you project, make sure you have a solid research question, okay. So uh how to naming your 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 team, okay. It is the best to write a qualitative report, uh providing detailed information about a few things. So you can name your team, um maybe based on your ideal, okay, based on uh your idea. Based on your informant or based on your literature, so this one uh that's why. If let's say you ask me again, why doctor in qualitative research as a main instrument because. Uh because why, first, you have to develop your own, I I you have to develop your own uh interview. Guide, after that, you have to collect your own data, after that, you have to analyze your data. And then the last stage is you have to name, you have to give the name for your team, okay. So this is how the way of qualitative data exists, okay. That's why in qualitative data, researcher as a main instrument, okay, so this is a quite different between quantitative. Okay, so the next step is uh interpret, yeah. Uh so the last stage is you need to compare with a traditional. If let's say you're finding, you already find it, doctor, doctor, doctor know me or any doctor in. Uh our department, find uh that you find that um no literature review to support is okay. Because it's a normal in qualitative data, if let's say you find um a new finding. Okay, it's a normal, because if you ask me, I'm also find a news uh finding, which is not discussed. In uh any literature, so that one is a normal, okay, why? Because you have to um remember that um qualitative, we more to in that. If uh research in that if a process, which is a we more to observe. Okay, we more to explore, when we explore, we will find a new information. Which is that in quantitative, we not get it, okay. So uh this is, I just show you uh how to display uh your data. Okay, maybe you can use uh what we call it's um mind map, okay, it's up to you, okay. So this is a report, how to write your report, I just show you even. Even you are still not uh writing your chapter four, but this is how we report in qualitative data. Okay, uh let me, eh, okay, let me share first. Okay, in chapter four, you need to, okay, um as I mentioned before, in uh qualitative. Data analysis, we need start with a cohort coding, category and team, but in writing. We need start with a team first, we need um, we need a provide team first. Okay, after that, uh you need to give us some what we call it, uh preamble for for your team. Then you need to write down your category, preamble, skate, and then after that, you need to interpret or comment. You need to comment based on the uh evidence, okay, so this is how to write your report, okay. And for your information, only two, okay, if let's say you want to write down in your chapter four, only two, you need to write. Uh in your um in your report, only two uh evidence or coding, okay. Why, if let's say you ask me, why doctor only two? Uh nanti you please remember the bugs, but if you ask me, I have an issue with that, uh before I. I want to submit my thesis because uh my PhD uh this is again, uh my PhD thesis um around four hundred. And then uh S G S um not allow me to submit my thesis, so that's why I need to. Um buang satu research question, so that's why. Uh in writing your report only two, just nice, because I. U P M or I'm not sure faculty not allow you to submit, if let's say your thesis the bug and I have. I believe that uh they agree no problem with that, okay, so this is um how you want to report in your chapter four, okay. Okay, for information, yeah, we also in qualitative data, we have a software. And mostly in Malaysia, we use Atlas D I and Vivo. Um uh you have to um be in your mind that. Um qualitative data and this is software only help you to manage your data. In term of you want to create your coding category and team are based on. This is based on you, okay, you have to be in your mind that, if let's say you want to use software in qualitative data, this one. More help you manage your data, okay, in term of to generate uh code category and theme are based on you, okay. What I just uh share with you, the step, this is uh that one is um step in term of how you want to analyze your data. In qualitative, so, yeah, you can use uh that step. Uh if let's say you want to use a software, okay, if you ask me, uh which one better, doctor in Vivo or Atlas D I. Uh for sure for me, because I already attend with two, this two class, Atlas D I and Vivo. For me, this one just um tools or software that help you to manage your data. Because my supervisor, because I'm um the the most shit a student. And that and proactive and then a profit is me, so because my supervisor and cost supervisor using and before, so I have to use. Uh Vivo, so, but when I attend, uh Atlas D I, they are the same, the same thing actually, okay. So, yeah, so this is, I just show you uh software that involving that a software in. Okay, uh maybe some of you still loading or digest what actually how to um. How to analyze uh qualitative data, so this is example. Uh and build the possible function of uh and outreach teenagers um. Help clinic, for example, this is your research question, okay, for example, this is your your research question, okay. Based on your reading, uh your transcript, then you just list down your open coding, you list down based on your opening. I mean, uh your transcript list down, for example, so this is the open coding. Pregnancy, smoking, self uh self esteem, misinform, peer pressure, time, sexual behavior. Uh alcohol stress, okay, so you just list down your open coding, after that, what you have to do is. You need to um try to group them, okay, try to group them, why? Because we want to reduce, we want to reduce the list based on um open coding, okay, because this is example. If let's say the actual research for sure, you have a long list for of your open coding, so this is. I just want to share you how actually uh cohort, I mean, uh in term of how to analyze your data, okay. So for the second step, you need to develop category, which is you need to, uh for example, you feel that. Uh pregnancy and sex uh sexual behavior, you can group this one under sexual health, so this one uh sexual heart drop. Mental heart, this is based on your idea, so this is uh based on your idea, okay. But do not worry, because you have a supervisor, your supervisor will help you in term to 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 correct. Or to rename your category, do not worry, okay. So um for example, smoking and alcohol, you feel that uh smoking and alcohol, okay, ways. Okay, smoking and alcohol, this one you can group under drugs, so you group them into drug, okay. And then you feel that self esteem and also stress, okay, this one you feel that always, this one I can group under mental health. So you just group under mental health, after that, you can miss um misinform and understanding. For example, you feel that a misinform and understanding is under lack of knowledge. So you group them under lack of knowledge, then after that, uh peer pressure and own belief. You feel that this one you can group under attitude, so you group under attitude, so this is how to uh develop category. After that, when you feel that no new, I mean, I know new uh no new information. Then you feel that, okay, uh my data already situated and I don't want to collect my data again. So, yeah, you can decide. In this stage after that, after that, you can develop themes, okay. Okay, so the next step is the how to collect, um how to develop team is you group them. Okay, for example, social uh sexual health, drug and mental health, you feel that this one, yeah, I can group this uh this category. When you want to use a group this category, okay, uh you feel that health issue for young people. So you group this category under health issue for young people, okay. After that, you feel that lack of knowledge and attitude, I think that we can group this group. To develop one uh one team, then you group group this uh category. To develop barrier for assessing service, so this is how you want to create your team, okay. And then the last one is ability uh and approachable, okay. So you group this one under intensive to use service, so this is how process to um. Qualitative data analysis, okay, you have to open coding first, you just list down the key point, everything. And then you group which one that's similar to uh category, after that, you have to uh reduce again. To group them uh to develop a team, so this is how actually to analyze data qualitative. Okay, using cohort, call what is a call, call refer to open coding, car category and T four teams, okay. Okay, so this is a good practice, I will show you a good practice in uh Q D A, which is, I believe that some of you are fit that how to. Uh why we need go to that, uh I mean, um why we need to uh determine that category or, I mean. Category already situated or not, so this is a good practice, uh doing want to collect your data, I mean, in qualitative. So for the first one, you have to collect your data, after that, after you finish your data collection, you need to transcribe what is. Transcribe, I already uh mentioned before, we need to uh convert into written document. Okay, after that, you need to do um open coding, you just listing the key keyword or the point. And then, uh because uh we cannot compare with uh open coding with others. Informant, so you need to collect for the second informant, so you collect for a second informant, okay. Then you need to um follow second step and that you need to transcribe, then try to do open coding. Okay, after that, I add, um at this time, you try to, you uh you can try to. Um see, uh they have redundant information or not, if let's say you have a redundant. Uh category, you can group them into category, okay, the same category. Okay, if let's say you feel that the data still not enough, okay. And still have a new information, you can collect for the third interview. And then after that, you have to transcribe of recording and category. If let's say uh data in category already uh saturated, already redundant and no new information. You can stop to collect uh your data, okay, your data collection for the next one, no need to go to uh interview session yet, okay. So at this time, you can develop team, okay, you can uh develop team, okay. So this is how uh we, I mean, a good practice in conducting qualitative data, okay. So far, do you have any question, anyone? So this is a recap, yeah, you need to transcribe, after that, you have to familiar with data, organize coding. Okay, so this is how uh technique analysis, so why do you have any question?
Yes, doctor, I have a question. Uh okay, um I want to ask, is it a problem if uh we communicate? We communicate using Malay language uh during the I V because uh during the transcribing process. We should um use Malay and English, I I also a bit.
Okay, so okay, thank you, Hannah, actually, for your information, if it's a. Your 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 final project, writing in Malay and then you into uh. You want to write your final project in Malay or English, Hannah?
Uh English.
Okay, for example, you want to write your uh final project in English and your interview session in Malay. So, yeah, some, uh yeah, um you can conduct your interview session in Malay, no problem, but. Uh you you need to, you need to translate during, uh after you finish your analysis, why? Because um if let's say, after you you already finished your interview session in Malay. Then suddenly you want to translate uh that one in English, maybe the meaning in the Malay word. Will change after you uh translate in English, so my suggestion is okay. Uh you can analyze uh in Malay first, after that, during you want to um during you want to write down your. Your chapter four, that time you just um translate which part they want to use as your evidence in your chapter four. Okay, Hannah?
Okay, thank you, doctor.
Sama-sama, okay, anyone's want ask me, okay, I mean. Yes, yes, no problem. Sebab.
So untuk bahasa, masa report tu je yang kita tukar, nasib ke bahasa Inggris.
Yes, betul, boleh, tak ada masalah. Sebab if let's say uh your 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 informant mostly, for sure, I believe that some of nation are not expert, not influent in Mal- uh in English kan? Uh so kadang kita nak cakap, dia tak paham. So but they have a wish of uh information, then you want to get the the information from your informant. But in term of the communication in English, they are not expert, it's okay. You can um interview them in Malay. After that, uh after you analyze, maybe you want in term uh, nanti nak writing in chapter four, baru you translate yang part yang you nak guna. If let's say, you already translate your transcript, for sure, not all transcript uh yang kita akan gunakan as a evidence in chapter four. So my suggestion, you can translate first, uh you can translate first, you can analyze first, uh maintain in bahasa Melayu during you want to uh writing your chapter four or to give them uh evidence to support your category and team, that time baru uh translate in English. Okay, but they have a certain offer, because it uh maybe sebab kita in Malaysia, I believe that our supervisor understand um Malay word, but it's up to you. Maybe this one you can discuss with your supervisor. If you ask me, uh if let's say, I maintain, if let's say, because um uh because uh my my interview station masih ambisi tu, uh guna dua bahasa, Malay and English. So what I did, I just maintain because um my supervisor said that it's okay, you just maintain this one because uh our our, because my thesis in Malay, so bila Malay orang paham, my is mean a paham. But if let's say, I want to uh use my finding to to publish in international, I have to translate in English. So this way you need to um try to discuss with your supervisor, okay?
Okay.
All right. So far, uh siapa-siapa lagi nak tanya soalan? So far, everything clear?
Hi, doctor, I have one question.
It's okay, Hannah.
Yeah, um I want to ask, do we need to give the uh interview guide the the research question before the interview?
Yes, it's actually that one is a good uh, it's a good practice actually because um to be before, because some of the informant quite uh quite quite scared. What actually question that you want uh to ask them? So uh to be honest, yes, this is a good practice. If let's say, your informant already um mentioned that uh you already asked uh Tuhan open, can I interview uh Tomper next week? Is it okay? Yes, please, okay? So if let's say they are, they already approved for the intervention, please um provide them an interview guide, okay? Please provide uh interview guide for them, at least uh they already prepare what the question uh. Okay, they they can uh prepare for your your question. And then for your information, some of them uh based on my experience, um some of the informant, uh they are not required, uh not request uh the phone information or we call it interview protocol and some of them, yeah, they 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 need your your interview protocol. But this one depend on your informant, but let's say you want to share with them, yeah? You 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 can share uh with your informant, no problem. Okay?
All right, thank you, doctor.
All right, so far, any uh any question? If and uh if no question, maybe we can um stop our sharing for today? Okay, Doctor Nomi, are you there? Okay, I believe that, wait, I need to call Doctor Nomi first.
Yeah, doctor, I'm here, I'm around.
Okay, uh Doctor Nomi, I already, I feel that uh my sharing today already finished.
Okay, I see, I saw.
Okay, so far, thank you, Amey and Hannah and Doctor Nomi. So if let's say you have any question, maybe you can ask Doctor Nomi, okay?
Uh sure, sure, thank you so much, Doctor Nomi, uh thank you so much.
All right, okay, assalamualaikum everyone, bye.
Okay, so that's all I have for today, so thank you, thank you guys.
All right.
Assalamualaikum. Assalamualaikum.